Admit her, she got out today. That's what she wound up being. At Swansley. Yeah, they had her forwarded to CDC because they hadn't seen a case in that year.
Where is the time she traveled?
No, she does work the arena, so, you know, she can tell what kind of people are coming and going out of there. You got people from Canada, you got people from other places, so, you know.
I have the negative for A and B, but they want to have their antibiotics.
He got the cooties for sure. Uh, alright.
Call meeting to order, roll call. Mayor Corbett?
Here.
Alden Matthews?
Here.
Alden Silver? Alden Spicer?
Here.
Alden Law?
Here.
You can adopt the agenda, we got a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second. Alright, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment section, nobody has signed up to speak, so we'll move on to new business. Review the annual audit financial reports for fiscal year ending 2024.
So, uh, I'm sure you guys have memorized this.
Words for words, beginning to end.
So the, uh, two questions have this in.
Can I talk this?
Sure.
Do we get credit for writing our minds?
Yes. Uh, so, uh, this is our auditor report for fiscal year ending, uh, June 30th, 2024. Uh, we have, uh, a finding in there regarding internal control. We can get into more of that detail, uh, in a minute. Uh, I think I want to just, I'll introduce Jessica Fisher and Paige Tyler, they're our auditors. They're gonna present, I don't, I think Jessica's gonna do most of the talking.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, once she's done, if, uh, if they have further questions, I can help explain. And we can talk about the findings, uh, in more detail. That will likely be the most discussion point, it's the biggest, uh, interesting part of the discussion point, I think.
Alright, well, I'm Jessica Fisher, this is crap. Um, but first off, thank y'all for letting us do this. Um, we've been doing this for about 10 years, and I've been on it for all 10 years, so, um, yeah. Been kind of moving up, and now I get to present. Um, alright, so I'm obviously not gonna hit every page because there's 144 of them. Um, and so I'm just gonna kind of hit some high points, and if there's anything that y'all have questions about that you might have already seen, or, you know, if I blow through something, then just stop me and we can talk about it. Um, so, the first thing I'm gonna kind of point out is you'll flip to page, um, it's gonna be, page five, it's gonna be in that, um, letter of transmittals, it's gonna be like a Roman numeral five, I think is what it is. So, um, I guess I think some of you are new, um, this is the second year that you all have been, um, or I guess the third year that you'll be applying for the GFOA certification. Um, so as part of that certification, you all have to have this letter of transmittal. Um, and you all fill this out, we don't really, we just kind of read through it, make sure it seems receivable. Um, and so, if you scroll, if you look towards the bottom where it talks about the relevant financial policies, um, you all have a policy that basically says you should have to maintain at least 30% of your operating revenues. Um, and you can see here that you all are achieving that, you're running at about 70% of that right now, um, which is great. Um, and I think it was very similar to that last year, so, so far you're matching that pretty well. Um, and then if you scroll down, if you go to the two pages, flip to two pages over, um, you're gonna see the certification. So, the certification, um, in this year's financials will actually be related to last year, um, so they kind of run a year behind. Um, so I just wanted to point that out, that you all did achieve that for fiscal year 2023. And then, we're gonna jump to the actual first page, um, of the financial, or of the auditor report. Um, so it's gonna be page one. So this is your, uh, so this is our actual opinion of, um, from our audit. And so, if you look at the second paragraph, um, this is basically our opinion. Um, you all have a clean, or what we call an unmodified opinion, um, so we didn't find any material, you know, issues. And, um, so that's gonna be applicable to your governmental activities, your business type activities, each major fund. Uh, your ma- your major funds can change from year to year depending on, you know, different thresholds and how much revenue you got in them, or expenditures. Um, and so for the past two years, your major funds have been your general fund, your, um, and then your super fund and your debt that are being signed. So, those little, those three specifically will get more scrutinized from a audit standpoint than some of your other areas. Um, and then, a couple of years ago, your par sales tax went in there for about a year, and then it fell back off. Um, so those are your major funds, and then all of your other ones just kind of get aggregated together, and then we kind of look at them like that. Um, so you have a clean opinion, um, and then, the next couple of sections, um, so responsibility and management, um, that basically is just something how, talking about how management takes responsibility for the financials, um, and that's just kind of what management is responsible for. And then on the next page is, um, all the auditor responsibilities. Um, so these are just kind of the things that we're doing, and, you know, we're subject to GAAPical, we're independent, um, all of those things. And then, you flip to the next page, um, we have the required supplementary in- information. Um, so these are all of the things that are required by the GACI, which is your, um, the standard that dictates what your report should look like. Um, so your M D N A is required, um, and then, you have some schedules related to pension and O P S that are required. Those are not only required by the standard, but also by the state. Um, so those are in there, and then we have the supplementary information. So this information is, um, can be a little bit of combination of requirement by the state, um, and the GACI. So, um, those combining an individual major fund financial statements, um, the budget comparisons, changes in long-term debt, um, those are more required by the state, um, and then they also just come into a breakout of your funds that were aggregated. It kind of breaks them all up so you can see each of those funds that were grouped all together, you can see them on an individual basis. Um, and then your, um, your C F A, or your Schedule of Expenses for Federal and State Awards, um, that's required by both the GACI and the state. Um, and I will point that out when we get towards the back, because we did change that format a little bit. If you just happened to compare to last year, you would've noticed that it was different this year. Um, so then, the other information, um, this is just other information we put in the report that, you know, the users would like to know. Um, it's got just some statistical stuff, some introductory, um, things like that. So they're not technically required, but they're just good to have in there so that your readers can understand some things a little better. Um, and then, the last little section of the opinion here is the, um, recording, reporting requirements by the government auditing standards. So, this is in here because, um, of the federal awards you guys have received over the year. Um, and so, there are a couple more opinions we have to give in regards to that, um, to that federal money that you all have gotten. Um, and so, this basically just points back to those other two reports that we'll talk about, um, here in a few minutes. Um, and then, so then the next, the next probably six or seven pages are just your M D N A. Um, this is a little combination of us working on it and Jason working on it. So, Jason pulls this together, and we just kind of double check the numbers that are throughout it. Um, and I think you all might have gotten some extra pages earlier. Um, so I just highlighted in here some of the changes that have rolled through as a result of some of the contributed properties, um, which kind of relates to the prior period adjustment, which I'll talk about in a little bit later. But, really, I just wanted you to see kind of throughout the M D N A, all the little changes that will get maybe as a result of those capital asset changes. Um, so I'm not gonna go into like very detail about it, but I just wanted to highlight those changes, because I wanted to always see the subtoday version. Um, so then, we're just gonna kind of skip through all of the M D N As, um, and then we'll skip over to page 12. Um, so that is gonna be your statement of net position. So this is your entity-wide, um, statement, and, um, so this is gonna show you both your governmental activities and your business-type activities. Um, and just to point out a couple of things that you might want to know about, um, your cash went up this year approximately 1.5 million, or about 7% over last year. Um, and one of the changes that you'll see highlighted on here, again, relates to the capital assets. Um, and then you'll see a line on there, restricted cash. Um, so there was some funds, and Jason can correct me if I'm wrong, um, there were some funds that were drawn off of one of your loans, um, but they have not been used yet. So that money, you have the cash sitting in your account, you just can't use it, because it's for something specific. So we pulled that out and we made it restricted cash, so that way that it, that you all, and your users will know that you have this, but you can't really use it for just general things. Um, so just wanted to point that change out, and that change, you'll also see towards the bottom, your unrestricted number is also highlighted. Um, and so basically, that's where it came out of, that 2.4, that 2 million came out of the unrestricted, and it moved into your, um, net investment capital asset. Um, the reason it moves into there and not into the restricted section is because the funds are actually related to the purchasing of capital assets. So this is a big finding thing, um, and you'll be able to see it on another schedule in just a second. But it, for your government, or for your entity-wide, everything just kind of rolls up into one big consolidated, um, entity. Um, the other area I kind of wanted to point out on here is your receivables. Um, your receivables went up in your governmental activities, um, quite a bit from last year. Um, and that's mainly due to the increase in property taxes. Um, so you have your next year property taxes on here as a receivable. Um, and then... Okay, and then your, um, accounts receivable overall went up approximately 880,000, or it's about a 40% increase over last year. Um, that's not alarming, um, because you all have seven projects going on, so naturally you're gonna have some things in AP that are gonna cross your mind, that'll be sitting there. Um, I'm still on page 12.
Oh, my gosh.
No, I saw you scrolling, sorry, yeah, I kind of just jumped back and forth, I'm still on page 12.
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, wanted to point out, again, on this same page, if you scroll up just a little bit, um, to your liability section, um, oops, the other way, sorry. Yeah, so I wanted to point out your debt, um, your debt has also gone up again due to all the projects and things that you have going on. Um, but it went up approximately about 12 million, um, over last year, and that's due to just continuing to make draw off of some of those, um, those funds that you all have to build the park center and the treatment plant and all the fun things you all have going on around here. Um, and then... Okay, and then, I just wanted to begin to point out your net investment capital assets. So that's basically, um, your capital assets number over the top that you'll see, um, less any debt that you have. So this is basically like your net investment in your capital assets. So that is up approximately 8 million, 18 million. Again, there's a bunch of new assets going on, the books at pretty high values, so that's gonna naturally keep going up as you guys have projects going on, and big projects going on. Um, so then, moving on to page 13, um, so this is your statement of activity. So this is kind of your income statement, it's gonna show your revenues, your expenses. Um, again, the city's growing, so your revenues are going up, your expenses are going up. Um, and so, one thing that I did want to point out that we've not seen in a couple of years, um, if you look at, under the capital grants and contributions column, there's a amount on there for 3.8 million dollars. Um, that number right there is gonna go up just a little bit more, because we have a couple more assets that need to go on the books. Um, we ran out of time today. Um, so that number's gonna go up, and that's basically, um, you all accepting roads free, that off some of the developments going around. Um, and so that gets counted in your assets and revenues. Um, so we've not seen that in a couple of years, but I think we're gonna see that definitely this year, and it'll be to get next year. Um, and I guess any other time you accept, um, some property. So that was just a big item this year, that kind of increased your revenue quite a bit. Um, and then, the other area I wanted to point out on this page that kind of increased pretty significantly, um, if you scroll and look at the general revenues and transfer sections, the impact fee, um, your impact fees went up, um, approximately 5 million dollars over last year, about 124% or something like that, um, just due to the increase in the fees. Um, so that's just a big increase we saw this year. Um, and then, again, on this page, um, the prior period adjustment, you'll see it's, um, the 400, or the 40 million that's highlighted on there, that's due to the prior period adjustment, um, and the slight change that got made, um, earlier today, um, with that. So that's again, related to the, um, capital assets. Most of the highlighted areas you see in here are gonna be related in some form to the capital assets, um, whether it be the contributed property or, um, the prior period adjustment. Alright, and then, go to the next page, page 14. Um, so this is just your governmental fund. So, the difference between your governmental funds and your entity-wide is the, um, the GACI 34 adjustment. So you'll see on here that, um, there's no capital assets, um, and then there's no, like, liabilities related to your debt or anything like that. So all of those items get put on, um, as part of that conversion. So they, these are just like your, your base funds and kind of the assets that are running through there that are not related to your debt and your, um, capital assets. Um, and so, again, I want to point out, um, the restricted cash. So there's a 2.4 million, um, that related to the cash that you've drawn, you just haven't used yet. Um, and then, you'll see on here, towards the bottom, that it's showing as restricted on here. So for these funds, they show as restricted, but as part of the conversion, it will show as the net investment capital asset. Um, so it's just the difference in the, the conversion. Um, and then, the next page, um, is basically how we get from, this is the conversion, um, for just like the balance sheet. Um, and so these are all the items that get put on and/or taken off. Um, so you can see that we've put on 71 million dollars worth of assets. Um, all your debt's on here, all your pension, liabilities, O P S. Um, so these are all, um, pretty standard for you all from year to year, so it's not really been like a huge change. Um, and then again, the next page, these are just your revenues, um, for your governmental funds, um, again, before any conversions or anything like that. And then the next page is the same thing, it's just the conversion to get from these funds into your government-wide. Um, and then you'll see that 3.8 is showing on there, so that doesn't show in government funds, that's part of your government, that was part of your entity-wide. Um, so again, um, alright, and then, this is, uh, the next page, page 18. This is your, um, general fund budget comparison. Um, so we show your original, your final, and your actual, um, and then there's obviously the variance between your final budget and your actual. Um, and so, the big thing to look for on here is that you didn't, um, extend, that you didn't send more than you approved, basically, at the start of the year. Um, and you didn't in any of the funds that we report, so that's great. Um, and one other thing I wanted to point out on here is, um, the 25 million of actual and your total expenditures. Um, if you take out, um, because that 13 million has basically all your projects in it, um, if you take out about 12 million, which relates to all your projects, um, that leaves roughly about 11 million dollars worth of expenses. Um, and one thing you can kind of look at with that is you have 11 million of expenses, and then, um, if you look at your unrestricted, um, fund balance, that was back on page, um, 14, you have 6.2 million dollars, so you've got a, kind of a good little reserve of expenses built up in there. So you've got about 6 months' worth of expenses built in there. Um, so that's one thing we just kind of like to point out, that's a nice little net tag there. Um, and then...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Miscellaneous, we budgeted 1.4, how did we miss it by 1.4? What would be in the miscellaneous that we would miss by that much money on revenues?
Um, what, where are you looking at?
Under miscellaneous revenues, the 1.2 million dollars under the variance for the final budget, or insurance, claims.
I don't remember what else in there.
I don't, yeah, I don't remember the mapping on that, um, but it's probably grant related, because it's up in there. Uh, your interest on taxes, probably not intergovernmental, or definitely not terms for services.
Sometimes the grants fall in the intergov- governmental revenues, because those come from the state, so they count that as governmental. Um, I can look.
I never liked the miscellaneous call on myself, but...
Yeah, yeah, um, I, I don't remember what, what all these have that account.
My wife's a CPA, she hates miscellaneous, so, yeah.
I get that, I get that, it does become a catch-all account.
And I just, it just had to catch my eye, you know, 1.2 million, how did we miss that target? And so, it's like, what would that be?
Yeah.
Specifically, I, I, I think it's grants, I just, because, uh, I feel like we budgeted for the, um...
Was it par grants? I mean, for the soccer fit?
We received, yeah, we probably got that. Well, we didn't actually receive all of that yet, uh, and that's, that's a different fund, though, that, that would be the par sales tax, if we get that, yeah. I think it's, uh, the T-Dog, I think it's this, this, uh, Raymond Hirsch 30 million.
Yeah, I've been carrying that in my...
I think we, we budgeted for that, and we didn't receive very minimal...
Yeah, okay.
Amount of that, which we spent very minimal amount of that, for that also, so... I think that's what that is.
1.3 billion, I think I budgeted, and, yeah, and we only spent, like, 20,000, 30,000.
We can look.
Sure, he'll tell me later.
I don't know the groupings.
He can tell me later.
I had.
He's done me later.
Alright, and then, moving on to page 19, um, this is just your ne- your statement of net provision, so these are just your business taxes, this is your storm waters, solid waste, and sewer, or, um, storm water, so always get them all in here. So it's those three that you have, um, so this is just showing you that breakout of those. Um, again, your capital assets, um, are highlighted just because they've been adjusted. Um, they think of the net investment capital asset, or net investment capital asset. Um, and then, your total overall net position increase of these funds were approximately 8 million dollars, so it's a little increase. Um, and then, if you go down, or flip over to page 20, um, we have the net position at the beginning of the year. Again, that's gonna be related to the capital asset, um, which we'll talk about when we get down into the notes here in just a few minutes. Uh, and then, the next two pages are just your cash flows, um, so you have positive cash flow, so that's always good. Um, alright, and then, starting on page 23, it's just all your notes to the financial statement. Uh, I am not gonna bore you with very little of these. Um, but if you will flip down to, um, page 32, uh, I just want to point out here, um, there was a new GACI going into place last year, um, to record for the N E T S, which, um, is your subscription-based information technology arrangement. Um, so everything's moving into the cloud these days, and so, um, the GACI decided that they wanted to start recording some of those transactions about assets and liabilities. Um, but you all don't have any of those, so there's not really been any material change with those. Um, so that got implemented last year, but there's just been, still no change with that. Um, and then, flip over to page 34. Um, so this inter-fund transaction, um, this is a new table, um, prior to the state this year. Um, and historically, you all wouldn't have this, um, but there was an issue we found where the, um, impact fees were being incorrectly reported in the building permits. Um, and so, they should've been going into the individual, um, impact fees instead of just into the general funds. Um, and so, we had to, Jason had to pull all those out and reallocate them. Um, so you have the due-to's, the, the impact fund from the general fund.
I, I could talk more about that right now if you want. Um, so this is, this was part of one of our, our findings, um, and I found this looking at samples. Uh, we were pulling testing samples, uh, for building permits, because building permits, the analytical showed it was high. Uh, what was happening was the, the building permits and the impact fees that we were selling online were working correctly. The ones that we were receiving in an office were not getting posted correctly, they were all going to building permits rather than going to building permits, and then for impact fees, it happened for...
Is that a manual process?
Yes.
So the tickets aren't being posted correctly to the right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, and my staff that's newer didn't realize that they were supposed to be checking that. Um, so we're now, you know, that we're supposed to check that.
And then you hire new staff, is that part of the correction, that you'll train people to do that?
Well, yeah, that's, yeah, obviously, yes.
Well, didn't you have money spent out of that general fund?
No, no, it's, it's, it's all been corrected in the general entry, they even factored in interest. Uh, so it's like it never happened, it's, it's there, uh, we've already moved the money. We, the only thing, we've actually recorded the entry, um, in the current fiscal year, we haven't recorded the closing entry yet, but once we've recorded the closing entry, it'll, all these due-tos and due-froms will go away.
Yeah, so next year, you, you likely won't have this.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just because it happened right at year-end, and so, we have to show it this year because of the new state. So it was just perfect timing, state wanted to tease it.
And the reason, another reason why we didn't catch it, it, it's one of those things that, it, part of it was working correctly. The online portion of it was working correctly, and the in-house was not. So, it wasn't like there was zero impact fees, there was significant amount of impact fees, even more than what it was prior year without this. Uh, so it would've been better if it was just completely broken.
My banker friend says there had to be a balancing issue somewhere.
Yeah.
Right, because if one side was working correctly and the other side wasn't, and you were doing your due...
No, 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 not the, not the same transaction.
Okay.
No, no, I'm not saying that, that, I'm saying that it was a different transaction. The customers who bought their stuff online, it was working correctly.
Right.
But if they didn't buy it online and they came in the office, it wasn't working correctly. So it was, part of the revenues were being received correctly, the, the online, it was all set up to automatically.
Right.
So that was, that was good, but it was when we were receiving it, there's a product code to select, and we were selecting building permits. Well, in your mind, you think of it, it's what you're paying for, you're paying for a building permit, well, and the way our system's set up, you're not paying for just a building permit, you're paying for a building permit and impact fees, whether it's police, fire, roads, parks, you're paying for multiple product codes.
Right.
Well, we weren't selecting the product codes currently, we were selecting just the building permit. And, and that's where we didn't see it, and like I said, there was, there was revenues going to, it wasn't completely blank. The, the online portion of it was, was supplementing part of that, and it, like I said, if it was completely broken and there was nothing in there, then I would've, but I would've made it, yeah.
We found it early then.
We would have, you know, we would've found it real early.
Unless you're doing your own internal audit, you would've never, probably would've never caught it.
And, and all of our revenue projections were reading expectations.
Right.
So we were, we, we were like, I don't...
Right, but I guess my question is, when the money is received and you allocate it, we're supposed to go to an office. Is there not different things on your building permit form where the money is supposed to be allocated, where it should go at that point? So at some point, we should've caught it, in my, in my opinion.
We recently changed that process, is kind of what fed into this problem.
Okay.
Is that was, that process changed also, at the same time, we were changing people, we were changing processes. And so, we were training new, like, outside of finance department, we were training new people to receive, uh, that weren't previously... uh, that weren't previously doing receipts. They were doing like a hand receipt and an Excel spreadsheet. And then so when we received the money and did the deposit, it just said, it just said permit. And then, so now we've got, where we're looking at it and we're, we're seeing the actual permit and we see the impact fees on there. And I've told the people doing the deposit, okay, well, this is not general fund. This is, this portion of it's general fund. And then there's a couple other, there's like three aspects of a building permit that all go to building permits. And then there's a typical, just say in our typical single family home, there's about three aspects that go to a building permit. Even under split three, there's three different dollar amount there. And one is I think capitalized by square footage and the other two I think are flat fees. I think there's mechanical and there's a plumbing inspection, there are plumbing permits you have to pay for. And then the, uh, the impact fees I think are flat fees on a single family home. So you could see those easily on, on, once you got to looking at it. Uh, but we didn't know, we didn't know the problem existed.
Right.
Until we, until we did this audit.
What months were affected and did it roll over into this fiscal year also?
It did, uh, it just barely in this fiscal year. It actually went back into the previous fiscal year. So not only was it all of, all of that twelve months, it was a little bit into the twenty twenty-three fiscal year. It was about thirty thousand dollars in that fiscal year and then the rest of it was the twenty-four fiscal year. And then there was, I don't remember the dollar amount in twenty-five. It was minimal, I think it was less than thirty thousand on twenty-five.
So our current balances for December, have they been corrected for this report that we have?
Yes, yeah, those are correct.
And so November was incorrect?
November was correct. It was, uh, it was October or September when we, when we changed that. Yeah, it, it, and you can, you can look back in the earlier reports and, and see that it went down or see that like impact fees went way up and the building permits went down. And that's why, because we realized that, that this was not working correctly.
And the impact from twenty-three, it just got rolled into twenty-four. So that has also been corrected through twenty-four's numbers. So the numbers you see in here are the correction of twenty-three and all of twenty-four.
Yes.
But we have a plan to fix it and we have-
We've already fixed it. We've already fixed it, we have a plan to keep it fixed.
Got you.
Okay, um, just moving on down to page, um, thirty-five and thirty-six. Um, so these are your capital asset all forward. So, um, they're broken out by governmental activities and then your business type activities. Um, and again, we expect this to go up just due to the amount of projects going on for both your government-wide and your business-type. Um, and then looking at the bottom of this page, um, so that machinery and equipment, um, that one got changed earlier today. Um, and so you'll notice at the top of this report, it says restated. Um, so there were some assets, there were some contributed property that came from prior years that needed to be added in. Um, so if you were to compare this report to last year's, your ending numbers and these beginning numbers would be off. Um, it's, it's roughly about three million total. Um, and so a little bit of that's going to be up in the cost section. And then this highlighted down in the accumulated depreciation. Um, that, so that's where those changes, that's where you would see those changes. Um, and then moving on down to note five, this is just the summary of all your debt. Um, there are lots of schedules in here about debt broken out in many different forms. So if you ever want to know anything about your debt, there's this footnote, which is, you know, three or four different pages. Um, and it just kind of gives, these next one, three or four pages, um, they kind of just detail out like the terms of all the notes, like what is the nature, what are the rates, um, and what is the outstanding balance. So this is kind of where you get kind of the glory detail. Um, and that starts on page thirty-nine. Um, so that just gives you the details, if you ever want to know the details of it. Um, and then again, just continuing on down through there. Um, if you flip to page forty-three, I'm not going to spin long here, but, um, this is your pension. Um, so the state actually provides us with all this information, so we kind of just put it in here. Um, but there's not really been a lot of changes with the pension. Um, your liability is about the same, it has been. Um, and then going on down to page forty-eight, um, that's going to be note eight, that's your other, um, your O-HEV. So again, not a lot of change here, um, with this number either. And then, um, going down to page fifty-three, um, just want to point out your commitment to the uncertainty. So this note just really talks about like all the commitments you all made. So any, um, projects where you've already signed agreements or, um, just basically anything that you're on the look for, um, is listed here. So you'll see all that, there's a couple pages of that. Um, and then going over to page fifty-six. Um, so this is where, um, on page fifty-six, this is where we talked about that prior year, your adjustment. Um, so you can see here that it's, um, due to the contributed capital asset. And then that three point two million, or three point five million now. Um, so that is, um, that's the net value of what came on. So Jason basically took the cost and backed into, um, like what would have already been accumulated between when they got put in, when it should have been put in service to the start of the year. Um, and so this is your, your net value on that, so that's the three point five.
On, on this topic here, this is the other part of our audit timing. Uh, the contributed property, you're not sure exactly what that is. Uh, like she was saying earlier, it's where we accept roads, sidewalks, streetlights, list stations. Um, and that specifically is what this is regarding business type activities and wastewater lines. List stations for several, um, developments over several years going back, probably before Joe Moss was here. We found issues, um, obviously there's some newer subdivisions in there too. Uh, there's, uh, there was a breakdown in communication, uh, between public services, planning codes, admin, uh, several departments. Us, uh, it just, we just, we didn't see, we didn't realize that, uh, that this was going on. We don't, and we don't have this happen that often. Uh, just looking back in the last two or three years, uh, we've, we've really got more activity, accepted more, um, uh, development property in the last couple of years. Um, but it's something that's went on for several years, obviously, you know. Uh, but we're going to get together soon and, and try to fix the process on that to, to keep everybody in the loop. And then, uh, there's, there's certain information that a developer has to provide that I don't feel like it's been provided as far as dollar amounts of what, how much, how much property is worth when we're accepting it. I know, uh, for example, like when we, we paid for this, uh, this water line out here, we had to provide the information to White House Utility District because it's, they're in the same situation that we are in with this. Is that they would need to know how much that is so that when it gets ready to be replaced, they have, they have accounted for the depreciation on that. Um, so that's what this, that's what this is here. Uh, there's not a, not as much of an impact on the, the streets, roads and, uh, uh, streetlights because that's a governmental fund. Uh, so it, it looks a little different in the audit report than the, than the list stations do. But there was, I think it was about the same dollar amount.
Um, so in, in the governmental funds, um, it was two or three hundred thousand or less, probably less than that. I can't remember off the top of my head, but there, there was this issue in your governmental fund too, but it was just significantly smaller. Um, so it just got ran through this year. Um, so that way we didn't have to restate the whole thing because that's a little more of a task to restate the whole thing. Um, but yeah, so, so there is that issue in both. It's just it was a little more prevalent in both ones.
We, we called this during the insurance audit, didn't we, from our public?
Yeah, that's how, that's how we, that's how this whole thing started basically. If there was an insurance audit, then Carol is still here. Uh, and it's not, it's not a matter of, you know, if people do inventory on capital assets, if they kind of, you know, you have a list and you're like, I want to see this. Well, it's a little different when you, it's not on the list. You can't, you can't just go like, I want to see this, this. Well, that doesn't belong to the city, this doesn't belong to the city. So that, that's where it's a little bit harder to find, but that's what, that's what happened. Is that basically they were going through and they, I think it was list stations specifically is what they found. They were like, I want to see this on the list and it wasn't on there, it wasn't being insured. Wasn't on our asset list and it wasn't being insured. Um, and it had went through a board, not this board, um, maybe several boards ago, but it went through a board and the board accepted it. And we didn't have it listed, like I said, on insurance and we didn't have it listed on our financials either. But that's what, that's what basically-
Developer puts the list station in and they give it to the city. Not our own list station we're putting in.
Anything, anything that we paid for has been captured. And it's the only things that we didn't pay for.
Yeah, so when we accept those then, um, Cheryl, maybe provide us proof that it's on our asset list. That would be good to me to know, so it's ultimately our responsibility to make sure. I told him that we need to do that with the planning commission first and then the board there.
Yeah, we can do that on all of, I think our initial plan is that basically we want to be involved before it gets to planning commission. And we want to have like a form, which I think C. just said there's a form to fill out. So we're going to have them fill out, uh, dollars and cost information. So that once we know that cost information, then we're like, okay, well, we know how much it is.
Right, so they can report the-
Right, so the board, you know, makes that approval, yeah, we'll, we'll accept this road, we'll accept these lights. We have a dollar value to it.
And we could, we could provide confirmation once something, that's, and specifically dollar amount. I think that would be helpful too, just to show you that, um, you guys accepted it and here's how much it costs and here's where, here's the asset number, we're on our, on our list.
And we're going to have to that support too, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they follow us, yeah. We have a finding, they have to follow us, so.
You know, they need to sure there's a form that that can go out and not only you know how to allocate the funds. They also need to know.
Yes.
All right, um, and just going to move a little quicker here. So, um, moving down to page fifty-eight, um, so this is the start of the required schedules, um, for the GADs and the state. So again, this is just the more detail on your pension, these next two. And then that third one is your O-HEV. Um, and then going on down past that of page sixty-one, um, so these are just all those combining schedules. So, um, this just breaks out all the detail of all the funds that have been aggregated into one and tested. Um, so again, this is just all the detail of that. Um, it's going to be your balance sheet, um, and then your, um, your revenue and your expenditures starting out. Um, and then again, because two of your business types are combined, um, page sixty-four to show the breakdown of those two as well. Um, again, your balance sheet, your income payment for those as well. Um, and then starting on page sixty-six, um, this is just the, all the, um, budget actual comparisons for all the governmental funds. Uh, we're not required to show it in your business type budget. Um, so this is just going to be all those government, um, funds. So I'm not going to bore you with those details. Um, and then going on down to page seventy-six, um, these are just the other schedules. Um, so these are kind of all the schedules that the state likes to see. The state likes to see these glory details of, to your point, for the miscellaneous, they want to know what makes that up. Um, so like with the governmental revenues, they want to see like every single line that makes that up. So that's really all these next two schedules are, just kind of the glory details of all your revenues and your expenses, and your expenses for your governmental fund. Um, and then-
I can contribute some of that.
Um, and then on page, uh, eighty-one, this is the start of some of the additional, um, debt schedules. So this is a new schedule that the state requested a couple of years ago. That's just kind of a summary of all your debt, um, kind of roll forward. And then the next two are, um, kind of your debt over the years. So this is how much you're going to be paying over the years and each year, what's your principal and interest, um, for all of those. Um, and then I'm going to come down on page eighty-four. So this is your CFA for your scheduled expenditures of federal awards. Um, and so if you were to compare this to last year, it was more of a roll forward. Um, it just had more information than it really needed, so we just condensed it down. So this is what's required, um, by the standard and by the state. Um, so it's just a little more concise and kind of gives, gives them what they want. Um, and so I will point out that you'll notice on here that there are three of them that are stars. Um, those are considered your major program. Um, so anything that's over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in expenditures, um, will be tested, um, pretty extensively for compliance and all those good things. Um, and so there is, and then, um, the next page is just a schedule of the state awards. So this isn't federal money, this is just state money. Um, and in the past we've combined those two schedules, we just broke them out this year just to make it more clear that this is your federal fund, these are your state fund. Um, and then, um, there's just a couple more schedules in there that talks about your property taxes, what your rates are, um, and then what your rates are for your utilities. Um, so then, um, again, to get your GFOA certification, um, the next like twenty something pages are just all the statistical scales, um, related to that. And so some of those changes that we've made, related to capital assets also goes through these as well. So that's why you'll see some highlighted items in the next page as well. Um, and then I'm going to just skip through all those statistical scales and jump down to page one twelve. Um, and so this is those kind of additional reports that relate specifically to your, um, the testing of the federal money that you all receive. So this specific, um, report here is the internal controls, um, in accordance with the government audit standards. So these are basically looking at your internal controls to make sure that internal controls are reasonable and that they're processed in the way that they're supposed to. Um, and so there was a clean opinion on those. Um, we did make mention to the finding because there was the material finding. And then on page one fourteen, um, this report is basically reporting on your compliance with those, um, programs. Um, so again, a clean opinion on those. Um, there were no compliance issues, everything was being used for what you can see through what we sampled. Um, so no issues there. And then one seventeen, this is just the summary, um, of all the, all the orders. And, um, so this, the breakout in sections here, so the financial statement, so this is going to be that internal control. So because we have that finding, that's going to have, um, a gap there. And then again, there's no issues with the actual programs themselves and how they're functioning and being used. Um, and then, um, just want to point out here that you all did not qualify to a low-risk audit fee and that was mainly due to a finding from last year. So, um, until that kind, until all of that kind of gets, gets worked out, you won't qualify for that. And also, um, the COVID funds that you see on there, um, it's a high-risk program too. So it kind of just makes you have risk naturally because of that. Um, and then moving on down to the findings in question costs. Um, so the prior year finding has been cleared, so that one's good. And then we have the new one, which we've kind of already talked about throughout. Um, and then about the last two pages are, um, management's strategic action plan. So just restate the finding and then it states kind of what you all are going to be doing. That is, if you all have any questions for me, or if you want any, or the rest.
I want to thank you for timing this, getting it done before the end of the year, like required. We appreciate that.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
All right, I think we're done.